You could. So we can make sure we do that. I'll call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Legislators, May.
Here.
Burdick.
Here.
Gunnip.
Here.
Cody.
Here.
Abbott. Hume.
Here.
Bryan. Chase.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
McBride.
John was here. Use attention.
Charles, you're need to be on mute.
Bush.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Kenny. Kenny.
Here.
Garland.
Here.
Urban.
Present.
Mr. Chairman.
Here.
McBride. Fourteen present, one absent. Three absent, I apologize.
Okay, since we are virtual, we'll dispense with the pledge, but Legislative Gun, could you please lead us in invocation, please?
Dear Lord, we are here this Good Friday to act on the business at hand. Please guide this meeting and let it be conducted according to your word. We ask that you might bless us, that we may find answers that we seek, and let your spirit guide the process. Help us to come to solutions that we can all agree on and put into action. Bless us as we celebrate your resurrection this Easter season. Amen.
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 Okay, are there any communications to be presented?
As listed on the agenda.
Thank you. Has there been any written statements submitted for the record?
No written comments have been submitted.
Okay. Will the clerk please call Legislative Districts, beginning with District number four?
District four, Ms. Gunnip.
None.
District five, Ms. Cody.
None.
District six, Ms. Abbott.
None.
District seven, Ms. Hume.
None.
District eight, Mr. Ryan.
None.
District nine, Dr. Chase.
None.
District ten, Mr. Olson.
None.
District eleven, Mr. McBride.
None.
District twelve, Mr. Knapp.
None.
District thirteen, Mr. Bush.
None.
District fourteen, Dr. Kelly.
None.
District fifteen, Mr. Kenny.
None.
District sixteen, Mr. Garland.
None.
District seventeen, Mrs. Urban.
None.
District one, Mr. May.
Chairman, I rise and offer items one and two and urge their adoption.
Leader, may I you requesting a waiver on number one?
Yes, I am.
Certainly objections to the waiver? Seeing none waivers granted. Go ahead, clerk.
Resolution of the Legislature of the County of Anadog electing a cents per gallon rate of sales and.
Need to wave the reading?
So moved.
Any objections? Leader, may.
Thank you, Chairman. Before I talk about this resolution, let me just, for, I guess, all our benefit. I'm not sure why I'm apologizing, but, but the, this process, and just acknowledge that this process was tough. Super, super fast. You know, we're reacting here. Lots of stakeholders involved with input and considerations to be given. Again, this isn't the fault of anything within the Anadog County Legislature in our process. This is just a set of circumstances that we find ourselves in to make this decision. I thought I would mention that so that we could maybe dispense with some of the complaints about our frustration over the speed of this process. But overall, I think we're here to do a good thing today. Item one is a resolution that proposes a tax cap, a three dollar tax cap as a basis for county sales collection on gas and diesel fuel. That item also includes a sunset. I prefer to view it as a checkpoint, if you will, as to whether or not to extend the proposed tax relief. That, that sunset date is November thirtieth. Of course, what we're proposing to do here today with the three dollar cap is in addition to what New York State will be doing as well. The original proposal, as we all know, came through at four dollars. It was good. It was a good plan to provide protection to taxpayers should fuel place prices really skyrocket from, from this point. After some consideration, we thought we could do better. And with the cooperation and full support of the county executive, we were able to move that number from four dollars, the cap, to three dollars. The way I see this, we're, we're pursuing three goals with this resolution. One, we're telling the residents that we get it, you know, these are tough times. It provides with the three dollar cap, it provides meaningful tax relief from local government. The other goal, the second goal is that we, we as legislators have to make sure that we balance the county's budget. That's the number one promise we make every year when we create a budget. So I think that we're able to do that even with a three dollar cap. And the last goal is that we all need to be considerate of all of the stakeholders in the sales tax process. First and foremost, the taxpayer, secondly, county government. Again, we have to balance the budget. And, and thirdly, our sales tax partner in the city of Syracuse. We need to be considerate of them as well. We'll be doing that with the resolution. The companion resolution we'll be talking about in a moment. That being said, this is a, I believe, a mechanism for providing real tax relief for our residents in Anadog County, and I urge adoption to this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader May. Is there any other discussion on resolution number one? Have to speak up if you want to be recognized.
I'd like to say a few things, please.
Legislative Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have any idea, first of all, how much money we're talking about?
And Steve, if you're on, if you could, if you could bird dog some of these questions, that would, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the financial impact will all be dependent on where the price of gas goes. So this resolution is requesting, again, to shift to a cents per gallon method, which has been allowable for counties since two thousand and six. And actually, this county for a long time was at that method. Was actually at the two dollar, two dollar cap. So this is, you know, repeating what we've done in the past, but at a three dollar cap. The financial impact will be dependent on where the price of gas goes. So, you know, to Brian May's point, that's part of the reason why you see a six month cap here to allow us to monitor this, calculate and analyze the potential impact depending on where the gas prices go, Bill, and allow us to pivot if we need to do that in regards to the impact on the county's budget. You know, just for example purposes, you know, I think gas right now roughly at the pump, you know, let's say average four twenty-five a gallon. If this were to go through and start June first and say the four twenty-five average price per gallon stays in play for that entire period, you're looking at a gross impact of, you know, roughly four million dollars to the county and, and the city combined from a gross basis. So certainly some real dollars, but certainly something that the county's budget has the ability to absorb. You know, we prepare the budget for this year, although we don't budget by commodity. We take a global approach on how we budget and forecast sales tax. And, you know, during the, the months that we're developing the projection or the two thousand and twenty-two budget, gas was in, you know, the three dollar range. So there's certainly, there was no expectation that we'd be collecting sales tax on gas at, you know, much over three dollars if at all. So again, you know, it, it's hard to pinpoint on exactly what the dollar figure impact would be until we, you know, know where gas prices are and where they're going.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. My other comment is this. This definitely helps the consumer that has a car. But, you know, what about the consumers that don't have a car? What, what are we doing for them? I mean, there's a lot of people out there that don't drive. What's, what, what's, how are we going to help them?
So Bill, I don't have a, I don't have an answer to that question. Again, the resolution on the table specifically deals with the, the gas tax. I don't, I don't know, I don't know if we're in a, in a form where we can get an answer to that question. But I understand your point. I understand your point.
Well, thank you. That's really all I wanted to do is make sure everyone understands my point. I mean, I personally don't like doing things like this. I think it affects the budget in a way that we, we don't really know. But obviously, the consumers need the relief, and I just wish we could do something for the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say.
Let's say, Q, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate Legislative or Leader May's talking about the process because that's where I was going to start. And it is pretty uncomfortable for me how quickly this went through with very little detail when I was inquiring yesterday about what happens to the city. There wasn't really an answer, but we got an answer five minutes before the session. However, I, my main thing is that I don't see this as an emergency. The emergency that we are have in front of us is climate issues. And, and we're working as a, as a globe, global village here to move away from fossil fuels. Frankly, I looked up some things. The gas price now, when you look at inflation, is twenty-five percent lower than it was in two thousand and eight. When gas prices go down, car sizes go up. And we're looking to move away from that model. So helping getting prices down, I don't think helps our environment or our city. I also wonder whose benefits, secondary to a little bit of what Legislative Kenny was talking about, who benefits from this? The people who will benefit the most are the people who drive the biggest vehicles, and those are the people with money. Twenty-five percent of the, the individuals in our city don't have a car. So one of the thoughts that I would have, and maybe this also relates to Legislative Kenny's concern. We all got a letter yesterday from Providence Services of Syracuse. And this is also related to our, not only are we number one with COVID, we're number one with poverty. And the best way to deal with poverty is through employment. So the Providence Services of Syracuse is something that S M T C recommends that the community invest in Providence Services to ensure that transportation is not a barrier to employment. So if we have excess fuel tax, perhaps another way to look at that excess is to support an organization like S M T C recommends, which is Providence. So I think there are other ways, if we weren't doing this in a very rushed way, to look at how excess revenue can be utilized. So right now, the state is reducing the tax, going to the cents per gallon. The feds are releasing oil from the Federal Reserve. I don't know why the county, at this point, when we are the, the poorest area in the country, maybe, that we are jumping on with this unless it's an overtly political move. So I, I think that this is something that really needs to be looked at much more than in forty-eight hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Legislative Q. Is there any other discussion on number one? Please speak up if you want to be recognized.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Legislative Olson. Is that right?
Or Burdick.
Burdick, I'm sorry, sorry.
That's all right. Good morning.
You, you sound like Legislative Olson.
That's fine. No problem with that. So, I mean, my, my thoughts about this resolution are, is that, yes, possibly, we are jumping on with other government agencies, of course, but that's not a bad thing. Let's not forget who our constituents are and who we are. We are probably the most taxed resident on the face of the earth, being New York State. And frankly, I understand some of your concerns. But the residents who don't have a car are not impacted or are not taxed because they don't use gas. So let's be clear of who we're trying to give relief to, those that do pay more tax, and that is folks with a car. I recently drove to Virginia, and if you're not sure, as I wasn't, Cisro taxes, gas taxes are pretty great. There's a lot of reasons for that. We have a local auto auction here, and so they produce or use a lot of gas. But if you go to Pennsylvania, gas prices are actually higher than what I'm used to. Maryland, West Virginia, Northern Virginia, all higher than we are until you get into the middle of Virginia and their gas price is, is a little bit less than ours. So all that to say, I, I'm supporting this. Yeah, as far as timing goes, listen, you can, if you, you look hard, you can see why this came quickly. And I don't think there's any foul play going on here as a result of being sped up. Appreciate everybody's work on this, moving it from four dollars to three dollars a gallon. That is meaningful change, and this will go through until November. So we've got six months of the experiment to see what we can do. And, you know, and I think it's, I think that we, as a county, can afford it. I think it will send a message to our constituents that we are interested in their personal financial help, health, and that we're trying to help. And, you know, obviously, we have a lot going on in our community, health related. Let's not forget how much we are or are not driving now that COVID is here and possibly going to rear its head again. So all that to say, I'm supporting the resolution, and I appreciate that we have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Legislative Burdick. Any further discussion on number one?
May, Chairman Rowley.
Legislative Kenny, go ahead.
Without getting into argument here, I, I understand Legislative Burdick's point. But I, I gotta say two things. One, highest tax on the earth, I, I really, really doubt that. I mean, I have relatives in Canada, and they pay a lot of taxes up there. But they get a lot of good services, too. And I have a friend that, I, I'm sorry, a sister that used to live in Germany for twenty years, and she's now back in the States. And they pay a lot of taxes in Germany as well. But again, they get a lot of good services. They get more vacation time also than Americans do. And I, things haven't changed that much, I don't think, since March first, when I went down south. And I paid a lot less everywhere I went and with, maybe except for Pennsylvania, but Washington DC, Virginia, Maryland, I paid less. So I'm, I'm a little confused there, but I, I just wanted to bring that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Legislative Kenny. Legislative May.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a, just a quick point. One, you know, I want to acknowledge comments made about both everyone else, what are we doing for everyone else and, and the climate? Our climate. All good points, for sure. But, you know, I work in the underserved virtually with the underserved every day. And there are a lot of people out there that are feeling the burn of the current inflationary conditions that we're experiencing. Very simply, this is something we can do to have an impact on the, just regular people who need to drive to work every day, feed their family, and do their, do, to be able to do their jobs and take care of their lives in a, a set of circumstances that right now, things are just a little more expensive. And this is something we can do. It's literally that simple. So I hope we can all get behind this. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader May. Any further discussion on number one?
Yes, I would like to, it's, it's duly.
Sure. Let's say, go ahead.
Thank you. I know, I've, I've been listening.
If you could, is there, I'd ask you to turn on your camera if you could. It's a requirement of virtual meetings.
If you can do it. Forget it. I can't. I apologize. Yeah. Oh, then should I not comment? That's fine.
No, you're good. No, please comment.
Okay, I was gonna say I can comment through my phone if you'd like. I, I, I agree with, I mean, I think Legislative Burdick captured all of my thoughts. And I understand what everybody's, you know, we, we care. That's why we're here. We care about all people. But again, this is something that we can do. We have the money. It's simple. And it's right. It's, it's, it's absolutely right. I mean, I, I, I find myself taking my, you know, teenage car because it's cheaper to fill and it's better mileage these days. And I'm in a good financial position, okay? So can you, you just, we have to think about, you know, the basic getting to work, getting to, to the grocery store, driving kids to school, businesses that are, you know, filling their tanks. This is a no brainer for me.
Hey, thank you. Any further discussion on number one? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call a long call?
Legislators, May.
She vote? Yes.
Gunnip?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Abbott?
Yes.
No.
Chase?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
McBride?
Hmm.
McBride? Knapp?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Garland?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Fourteen eyes, one opposed, two absent.
Number one is adopted. Number, we'll move on to number two. Leader May, are you asking for a waiver?
Yes, I am.
Is there any objections to the waiver? Seeing none waivers granted. Melanie, please read number two in.
Resolution regarding the imposition of a cents per gallon rate of sales and compensating use taxes on motor fuel and diesel motor fuel and Anadog County efforts pursuant to the enactment thereof.
Thank you, Leader May.
Thank you, Chairman. As I mentioned in the, related to the prior resolution, we have to be considerate of all stakeholders when it comes to doing anything with sales tax. And just as a quick reminder, that's obviously, one, our taxpayers, two, making sure we balance the county's budget. And, and three, we have to be considerate of the city in, in, in doing things such as this. This proposed tax cap, well, pass tax cap initiative provides protection to the city should it decide not to participate in our tax relief effort. And, and it works like this. If we were to miss our overall budgeted amount for sales tax collections in two thousand and twenty-two, and the city elects to not participate or opts out of this tax relief effort, then the county will be willing to enter, will be willing to, to make the city whole on the amount of demonstrable shortfall caused by the gas tax relief during the time it was offered. The basis for this offer is the fact that we have an agreement in place, the tax agreement with the city of Syracuse. This is the right thing to do in relation to, to that partnership we have with the city of Syracuse. I urge adoption to this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader May. Any discussion on number two?
I have a question, Legislative. Is there, how come the city wasn't in, involved in discussions about this, so we would know whether they're in or out?
I, I don't have an answer to that. I don't know if anyone from the administration has, has an answer to that question. Again, I, I think this provides some protection and give them an opportunity to opt in or out.
I was just wondering about, we, we are so unsure of the dollar amount. And if we wind up in a shortfall and then need to make the city whole, I was just wondering if we have any idea of what kind of money we're talking about. That's all.
If I could, you know, we did, based on the math Steve Morgan shared with us, Legislative Q, the, the, the total amount of, of, of savings sort of in play is four million dollars based on modest estimates. Obviously, we would owe the city one quarter of that. Or that would be, one quarter of that would go to the city. So it's about a million dollars in question. Just, again, on conservative estimates. And again, with the rate of, of sales tax collections being what they are on an overall basis, bear in mind, everyone's paying more for everything they do that's taxable. You know, we, we estimate conservatively that number to be around a million dollars.
Thank you. Thank you, Leader May.
Sure.
Any further discussion on number two?
Yes, Chairman, it's Mark Olson.
Yes.
I just want to, you know, I want to thank the administration and thank Brian and Ways and Means for putting this together. After going through it and looking at it, I think this is the right way to make sure that we're partnering with the city to make sure that they're whole with any lost revenues. Sales tax, as a village mayor and as town supervisors, are near and dear to all of us. So I'm glad to see that the county and the administration and Steve Morgan and everybody has taken into consideration that they won't be held they'll be held harmless through this, this process of helping all the taxpayers in the county. And, and I didn't mention it before, but businesses are going to benefit from this, and businesses create jobs. And if businesses have to pay more for fuel, they, they pass that on in higher costs for goods. And I think that's a, you know, so it's just this trickle effect that we keep not thinking about. So if we can make something go down, I think it's going to benefit everybody while the city can maintain a budget of their sales tax revenue that they're, they're going to get. So I think this overall is a good package. And I appreciate the work put into this. I know it was rushed, but sometimes this is what we need to do to help our residents, and I think this is the right thing to do. So thank you.
Thank you, Legislative Olson. Further discussion on number two?
Chairman Rowley, it is Tim Burdick.
Yes, Legislative Burdick.
So just a quick comment to say that I would just encourage the Syracuse Common Council to not, to, to, to come on board with this. And, you know, at this point, the county and the city of Syracuse, we both have means as far as our budgets and our cash reserves go. And, you know, I would just encourage them to let this, you know, that they would opt, they would opt in to, to this and that they would not look for any reimbursement from us, and that it would be a true, you know, great situation for everybody, that our numbers would work and that it would be as, as we thought, you know, through this whole COVID process, the county, we have money, and so does the city of Syracuse. And I would just encourage him in that. And I would just encourage him in that. Thank you.
Thank you, legislator Bertus. Further discussion on number two?
Legislator Q?
Yes, legislator Q.
And while I don't support and didn't support resolution one, I will support resolution two because I don't under, I I wish that the city had been involved in the first place, so he knew where we were going. But I don't think that the city should be punished. Or maybe that's the wrong word, for a decision that the county is making, so I will be in support of this.
Thank you.
Legislators, this is, oh, I'm sorry, this is Ben. Yeah, I was just going to weigh in on the the legal timing of this, if if anybody cares.
Sure, Ben, go ahead.
Sure. I just, it's it's very rare, you know, this is one of those taxes, is one of those rare occasions where we have an actual deadline imposed by the state that the legislation must be passed by. So this had to be effective June 1st, or we had to wait another, I think, additional four months. It's quarterly when these things have to pass. So June 1st was the next one, and the only way we had, we were informed by the state, we had to get it to them by May 2nd, or I believe. Yep. So that is just, I just wanted to throw that in for the record that that's some of the impetus behind this, the state legislative process, but also state law that mandates a very particular enactment schedule. That, I just want to put that on the record.
No, no, excellent, excellent. Thanks for weighing in. Thanks. That helps. Legislator Chase, did you want to speak?
Yes, I just wanted to echo that thanks to legislator Olson for recognizing that this is a good thing to do for the city. It's, hopefully, the city council will jump on board with us. But, you know, we, the city is a big part of the county, and being recognized that way is appreciative of all of us who live and represent the city people.
Thank you. Thank you, legislator Chase. Any further discussion on number two?
It's Julie Abbott.
Go ahead, legislator Abbott.
Yes, I think any way we can get the money back to people, it's their money, it's our money. And this is a small way, again, of of being good partners with the city because we consistently show that we support the city. And I I can't imagine that they wouldn't come on board. I think it would be sad for our shareholders. And if we have to, I love this idea of, you know, being, again, being good collaborators and partners. They have money. We have money. We need to, we need to do the right thing. And I I really, I really encourage them to to pass this as well.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, will a clerk please call a long call?
Legislators May?
Yes.
Gunning?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Abbott?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Knapp?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Garland?
Yes.
Irvin?
Yes.
Bertus?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sixteen eyes, one absent.
Thank you. So just to wrap up, I don't have any unfinished business to talk about unless someone else does out there. I have no announcements. Leader May, will you make a motion to adjourn?
He's muted.
Sorry, will someone tell me the 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 date of the next meeting, please?
May 3rd?
Thank you. I moved to adjourn until May 3rd. I usually have a little cheat sheet on my desk that I screw up every every meeting. I don't have that here, so I thought I'd just ask and get it right.
You got it right.
Thank you.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
All right, happy Easter.